Welcome to the August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five meeting of the planning board.
Attenna cable disconnected.
I see it here.
You can see up there?
I see it. Do you wanna?
Yep.
Do you wanna see it?
Good.
So, welcome to the August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five meeting of the planning board. Would you like to see who's here today? Your roll call?
Roll call, Mr. Abrams? President, Mr. Costanza?
President.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Ms. Simmons-Hurling?
Here.
Mr. Stamatoopoulos, Epps. Okay, the first order of business is a public hearing with respect to the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to establish zoning provisions for battery energy storage systems in the city of Revere.
So, this evening, would we like to open it up to their proponents? Hearing and seeing none, would we like to hear from the opponents? Hearing and seeing none.
Okay, I'll briefly explain the reasoning behind the ordinance. The industry, the energy industry is going through a lot of technology changes and they're looking for more and more alternatives to supply power to the grid and battery energy storage systems have become a good storage source that will provide additional power to the grid and there are companies that are looking for large sites within cities in the greater Boston area and Revere certainly does have a couple and we've identified the Highway Business District and the T E D District as the two most prominent locations. Right now, the way it's written, battery energy storage systems would be allowed in those districts by special permit by the city council and governed by a number of strict criteria. All these systems would have to be in compliance with fire, excuse me, fire association codes and we require National Fire Protection Associations. Their codes and regulations kind of rule the location of these and the safety compliance, safety standards for these systems. The part of the process would require the Revere fire personnel to be trained in these systems because they are going to be designed to be separated so there's no transfer of of power when, if something happens and the, they would also have to have significant buffer areas provided in zones that are close to residential, if they are. And all these requirements are dictated by the Fire, National Fire Protection Association. The height of these would be limited by the height that's allowed by right in this district. So, T E D allows up to a height of fifty feet and so does Highway Business. I doubt we would see anything that tall. These are mostly spread out into containers like trailers, looking similar like this. And no, I don't think that would be, that would meet the safety standards. They would have to be self-contained, so there's really no dispersal of energy. If something happens, if one good night, if this doesn't start a process of one going right after the other, it becomes really difficult for the fire department because water doesn't do any good in putting these out. You need a special
So far, that's what they've been using?
Yeah.
But let me ask you, what's the difference with these companies that you're saying have an interest in it? Is this going to be also open to National Grid and EverSource or are they not going into this?
I haven't heard that, right now it's private companies that are building these as a
So they hook up to the grid?
Auxiliary to those National Grid system and they would transfer their energy to the grid through.
So, does National, who's our National Grid?
Yeah.
So, National Grid, will they have to, if you got a battery energy system put in Revere, is National Grid gonna have to update their lines and their feeds also? I imagine?
Yeah, they would feed it right to National Grid.
And then they go to?
Energy would, National Grid would buy the energy, I imagine, from these companies.
I would think that National Grid would kind of be like the middle entity there because they're not gonna go away.
Yeah, I didn't know if they were getting into this also, but would private companies have some of these?
There are two that I know of, one is building something in Chelsea, they built something in Everett recently and that's pretty substantial storage system site in Everett, I think it's on ninety-nine. People by there will see it. But the sites they're looking at in Revere, I'll tell you, I mean, one site is the Trailer Park.
The whole park?
Oh yeah, they'd need something substantial, that, you know, they need something.
Is that about ten acres or?
Nine acres, they'd need something, at least that. And there's also the Caddy Farms located in North Revere, if you're not familiar with that. It's an isolated area and that's same size, about fourteen acres there, so.
Off of Salem Street?
Yeah, yeah.
Going into Saguas?
It's right next to the transmission lines that exist up there by the power company.
Frank, so is this gonna be under a building or is it gonna be open?
No, they'll be self-contained within these storage containers or building. It's a concern with, they call it thermal runaway, if one battery catches on fire, they all start catching. So, they have to be self-contained so they can be healed.
Yeah, because I participated in one of the meetings in Chelsea and they gotta put a building together and have the storage inside, batteries inside.
I haven't, that's a possibility and there are buildings that are set up like that.
Yeah.
With the storage containers inside the buildings.
Right, so is the one in Everett, I believe it's Jupiter Out of State, but that's gonna be supposedly a big one.
I mean, these have to be separated quite a bit, so you need extensive areas and included as, you know, large buffer areas between, because they do have a, there is some, like a minor humming noise that is generated from the batteries. It's really not not something that would be disruptive, but I mean, it's almost like if there was a highway next to it, you know, cars know invite. But that would have to be buffered completely, so noise control is part of the whole thing.
Is there gonna be like fire suppression inside these self-contained units? Like whether it's an Ansel like CO2 system or?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. What other National Fire Protection Act administration requires, they would have to comply with. They have experience with these already, so, you know, they've advanced them to a stage where they know how to make them safe. Obviously, special training for fire personnel would be effectuated in the city of Revere.
So, that, the special training would be part of the special permit?
Would be part of that, it would be regardless, it would be part of the permit, the building permit.
What if the fire department needs like additional apparatus in case there's ever some sort of event? Like is there gonna be any, I guess like what I'm asking is like, I understand there's gonna be training, but do we already have the necessary equipment to support like an emergency event or?
Could be, because there's gonna be substantial revenue generated as a result of these in terms of a pilot program, payment of lower taxes, we're talking mentioned up to throw some numbers, one point six million annually coming in, which would generate more revenue than any development on that site.
Well, with the oil farms, if a tanker rolled over, as it did a couple times on Belsa, I believe Masport sent air equipment to do the foam? Because we don't have a foam truck, would that be the same thing, would be within call, within five or seven minutes?
You're right.
So, does Masport have to have an agreement or do they have an agreement with the city of Revere for municipal aid?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, the fire chief could answer that question, but.
Is there anything written currently about, I guess, winding it down, right? So, should the incentives and the wonderful programs change? Because we're all in a whole lot of flux with all those programs right now and the finances not come through, what happens to these potential unused spaces? If they've started and then not been able to see it through?
Yeah, well, that's all, that's all gonna be rolled into the special permit process that they'd be responsible for the removal of that and have to pay
So that's in?
Performance bond upfront, if something like that happens. Now, you know, they say, oh, there would be significant finance in training and equipment for the Revere Fire Department as a result of this also. So, the company would have to make sure that the fire department is equipped with the proper roll call and equipment to deal with these facilities. And they claim twelve-month construction period necessary, over a hundred construction jobs. And on a permanent basis, the job is limited, maybe about ten jobs, but the payment of lower taxes provides significant revenue coming into the city.
Frank, what's the distance that this battery storage can be installed for any residential area? Is there a distance?
Between each other?
Between residential, between houses?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the setbacks, like fifty feet.
Fifty feet?
Yeah, about the area for setbacks, yeah.
Does this developer have already at least one going on in the area?
I believe so, in Chelsea.
Where?
Chelsea.
Yeah, but the one in Chelsea is not done yet, they haven't even break down, ground yet.
Then Everett, I think one
The one in Everett is still, it was approved, but they haven't broken ground.
Then, I think they, they have one in Western Massachusetts.
Medway or?
Let me see.
Havre maybe?
They name a number of projects going on in New England, including Boston, Chelsea, Havre, Medway, Agawam, Ludlow, Middleton, Middletown, and Hampton, New Hampshire. Middletown, Connecticut, Hampton, New Hampshire. And these are substantial facilities, up to four hundred megawatts.
Is that what they're looking for to do in Revere or if it goes through? Say four hundred?
Talking about a hundred and eighty, two hundred megawatt range in Revere. And they, pilot program gets, yeah, two hundred megawatt capacity they're looking at in Revere.
So is that?
So, the payment of taxes, they're looking like eight thousand dollars per megawatt. So, which comes out to like one point six million a year.
So, is, with all these, with these two proposed sites or these areas that it could go in, are they gonna do fifty percent? Are they gonna go to four hundred at one time or two hundred or is it a phase? Can they always add on?
We're not at that stage yet, all we know is that we want to create an area where they're adaptable, which can accommodate these facilities. And these companies have already started looking at these areas, so we know the areas that they're interested in.
In open air seems to be the way, I know you talked about, my colleague talked about enclosed facilities.
I think they can do it either way, either within a closed facility or individual, you know, containers that are separated quite distance apart.
Would that be, would that be a decibel and you're talking about the humming noise or would that be a fire?
Very, what I'm told, it's very slight, you know, you really can hardly hear it.
So, how do we, we don't control whether or not it's open air or enclosed facility?
Yeah, no, we, we have a noise ordinance, but that, we would have, we would make sure that the substantial noise control in terms of buffer and within the buildings, they wouldn't hear anything.
Chairman, mentioned, I don't know if you did it on purpose, but when you were talking about flux, it sounds like, I don't know if you're a Back to the Future fan, but the flux capacitor, I don't know if you were going there.
No, you know, I'm just watching all the tariffs and the things that are changing now, right? And dynamics that were six months ago aren't right now. So, I'm wondering, from a building perspective, right? Should the developer begin and not have the finances to finish? What kind of mess are we left with?
Yeah.
Because I understand that these are American products, these are Teslas?
And if you read the ordinance, it's written in here, you know. Under abandonment or discontinuation of use, that section, and removal requirements. And any removal of batteries that are outdated, if they've done, are within thirty days.
Is that regardless of if the company goes out of business?
Frank, are they looking to do two or one?
It could be two.
Same developer?
We know they're, they're two separate entities interested in two sites, so we could be looking at two.
Would this be mostly, Frank, to feed the Subic Downs project or is this going into, into the?
Go into the grid.
It goes into the grid.
Yeah.
And where it goes, except the
It doesn't hurt that all that development is occurring, you know, in the greater Boston area and also at Subic Downs, that the necessity is gonna be increased and demand is gonna be increased considerably. They're looking at different technologies. These can also, the energy from these battery systems can also support renewable energy sources such as wind, so if you have windmills or solar, I mean, they can generate. They've been used in conjunction with renewable sources, such as wind, wind energy.
How is that windmill doing in Chelsea, they finally gonna get that one going?
I don't know.
I think it's time for repairs, it's been there, what, twenty years? But she's right, you know, something like that, you have a windmill just standing there for twenty years there.
Just a blight, it just sits there, it's a waste of space. And I mean, the subsidies are ever-evolving at this moment, right, so.
It's, it's a new technology. There are experts in the field. We sought that, those experts when we designed this ordinance and we have, you know,
Other megawatts?
They're import, we have fire departments import.
Are the megawatts the same in Everett and Chelsea or?
I think in Chelsea, they show two hundred and fifty megawatts. Everett's not here, Everett must be done by, must have been under another company. But they're as large as, the largest one is seven hundred and forty megawatts in Medway. That's, that's big.
Davis Company Corporation Everett is a hundred, so.
Oh, that's right on the line, Chelsea Everett, is that where that is? I didn't know they had twenty acres over there. Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I have some information here, if you want to take a look at it after the meeting, you know.
All right, Frank, very good, thank you.
Okay, with that, we can close the public hearing.
Yes.
And go on to our regular meeting. The first order of business for the regular meeting is approval of previous meeting minutes. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All favor?
Yes.
All opposed, approved. Next is the vote on the recommendation to the city council with respect to the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to establish zoning provisions for battery energy storage systems. Is there a recommendation or a motion? I'm sure the city council is gonna be addressing this, they'll go to their zoning subcommittee right after they get the planning board's recommendation. I can't say if there's gonna be some changes to this, and maybe, there always is. But I know there's discussions, rather, the special permit to allow them as of right, but as of now, it's, that way it's advertised as special permit.
But that will go to zoning board of appeals, right, for a special permit?
No, city council.
City council. So I'd like to, you accepting a motion?
Yes.
A motion by Mr. Abrams.
As submitted to be approved.
To recommend, favorably recommend to the city council, the option of the ordinance, B E S S, they call them. We have a second?
I'll second that, Frank.
By Mr. Rivera. Roll call, Mr. Abrams?
Yes.
Mr. Costanza?
Yes.
Ms. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons-Hurling?
Yes.
Okay, voted and so ordered, a favorable recommendation vote of the city council. I believe that's it for business before the board this evening. One thing that Megan signed this evening was approval of not required subdivision plan for Overlook Ridge because they're working with Mass DOT to make a new connection to Salem Street that's gonna be signalized. So, the existing driveway that's behind the fire station will be eliminated. There'll be a new main access drive to Overlook Ridge Drive for a new driveway in front of the fire station, which will be signalized and that's all being paid for by Mass DOT. So, they won't do it until the cities of Revere and Malden take ownership of the right of way. But we have worked out an agreement with the developers of Overlook Ridge that they would be responsible for maintenance of lighting, landscaping, and a lot of other elements of that thoroughfare, Overlook Ridge Drive and plowing. It'd be a pain in the neck to have Malden plow half and Revere plow half, so.
So that would be the only entrance?
That will be the only entrance for various and?
No, there'll be a second entrance coming in north, right around at the curve. So, the way it's designed now, it won't be a dead end, the thoroughfare will go all the way through and then you'll be able, there'll be a egress onto Route One, Route One, north, all right? So, you won't have to go all the way back down to Salem Street and head north. You go right from the site, right onto Route One. And then there'll be another access drive right up north also, right at the curve. So, you'll be able to access the site by, the two means of access, Salem Street and Route One.
So, they'll create another exit?
Two means of egress, Salem Street and Route One. So, you know, residents up there, if you're heading north on Route One, which a lot of them do, you don't have to come all the way back down to Salem Street.
So, the exit that will be created into Route One is still gonna be?
In Revere or Malden? That's in Malden.
Malden, okay, yeah.
The entrance ramp that goes north, coming off of Salem Street?
The existing ramp.
Is that gonna be changed?
Yeah.
That's gonna be changed?
Yeah, yeah. That'll be changed.
That's part of this proposal?
Yeah. To the, to the joy of the people on Vining Street up in Malden, there's like five or six houses up there to deal with that traffic.
And going south into Boston by Linden Block, is that gonna stay the same the way it is?
That's gonna stay the same, yeah. The original plan was to have a a clover leaf, but there was no room to create access southbound and northbound from the site. So, they only can provide access northbound. Which helps Salem Street, helps reduce some of the traffic there, egress and access on the site. Okay, till our next meeting, we may have a meeting at the end of September. Possible zoning amendment that's in the works now for land that's actually in Revere, but it's in Chelsea. I'll explain it to you, but I mean, people don't realize this, but when you're coming down Route One, southbound, on the south side of Route One, near the Home Depot in that area there, which is in Chelsea, there's a portion of land there that's actually in Revere. And you can only access it through Chelsea.
It's on the other side of Route sixteen.
It's on the other side of, yeah, so.
And back of the, back of the Chelsea, isn't there a housing authority?
Exactly, right behind that, yeah, between that and Route One, is like a
Is it like a culvert right now? That's four acres, really.
Yeah.
Is it a wetland?
No.
And the access is through Chelsea?
Chelsea, infrastructure, access, traffic, everything is through Chelsea. There's no impact on Revere whatsoever.
So, that's next to Home Depot?
Well, it's, it's not next to it, it's across the way on
Close to the satellite on Broadway?
Yeah.
What do you want to do with that space?
So, that's basically behind, I'll see, Planet Fitness, there was a gym in there or?
No, it's on the other side, it's further north, yeah. Where Mr. Tux was.
Yeah, the building that burned down?
Yeah, there's an area behind there that was a neighborhood and then there's a
That's the projects, private projects.
As Sal said, there's part of the housing authority there.
Yeah.
Yeah, behind, behind that, this vacant lot that's in Revere.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
So, what's the plan for that?
Is it zoned, is it residential?
It's zoned residential, but they'll be coming forward for rezoning because they're looking at affordable housing project there and which would help Revere in terms of our affordable housing numbers. But it would be, basically, all the impacts would be in Chelsea. So, I don't think there'd be any
Is there Revere Housing Authority doing this or is that a private entity?
This is a private.
Do we know who it is?
Um, yeah.
Does he have a, is he a local?
Well, the developer, Mr. Procopio, he's owned the land forever.
Prokopio out of Saguas?
Yes. He's come, he's come forward in the past, I dealt with him decades ago, they're trying to do something there and they finally have somebody on board that wants to develop it for affordable housing.
Hopefully be helpful, we need housing.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's it.
Motion to close?
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming again. I try to get the reminders out.